Call the regular meeting, the mayor and town council of the town of Hampstead to order. Please rise for, instead of the opening prayer, we haven't had to do this in a while, but we'll do a moment of silence for Officer Jason Snyder. Thank you. Do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brad, you're up.
Hey, Evan.
Here.
Mr. Duff.
Here.
Mr. Babylon.
Yeah.
Mr. Runahan.
Here.
Mr. Kaby.
Here.
And Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Minute approvals from August 13th.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented from August 13th.
Second. Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, thank you. Brad, staff report.
All right, downtown revitalization, as everybody knows, the project's been funded, and I'm not going to say a whole lot about it because I'm going to defer to the mayor. I'm sure he has some comments relative to that whole thing. I will, I will add, though, that we had a meeting today with State Highway here, went very well, everyone seemed a little more enthused because now we know we're planning for real. Let's see, I just brought some notes on that. Oh, the BG&E drainage, the breakout project, supposedly BG&E will be out of there this week, and it was our first taste of traffic issues, and I, we did have a couple of complaints, and so it did, it did prompt some discussion about the maintenance of traffic for the upcoming project, and I did have some discussions with the chief and the public works guys, and we're going to start talking about some of those issues early so that we're not going to be planning that last minute. We'll keep you appraised to that. The, they are going to be talking to us relative to the, let's see, the road transfer agreement. So we'll be seeing something in draft that's being staffed up there right now, up at State Highway, we'll be seeing that, and they will also be contacting us, they're working on a draft MOU, so we'll also be hearing that. They're, they're separate, they're not connected in any way, and Dennis German was there today and stated that they're, it's done separately, they don't, there's no connection between the two agreements. That was about the highlights of it. Iliana Plaza Two, the only thing that's, we're waiting on now is the public works agreement between them and the town. I sent the final draft over to Mike, his wife is assisting him in this, so I've been talking with her, I think it's Elisa?
Yes.
And then all they need is, they're going to need permits from the county, and they'll be getting ready to go, so I'm not sure if he's planning on shovels in the ground before the cold weather comes, they probably will start doing some site prep, I would think at least. The yard waste issue that Mr. Thomas brought up, we're still working that. We did, we do think that the, the proposal that Tim Duff made relative to the clear trashcans might, might be a good possibility, I did send you all some information about that. The only issue that we're having, there appears to be only one vendor online that sells them, and the shipping and handling is fairly expensive, so I've been talking to, to Hampstead True Value, Les Wheeler, about for them to try to find if they can get a vendor where they could have some in stock there, and the residents could just go buy them at True Value. They're still working, trying to work that issue out, so we'll keep, stay tuned. I'm hoping that maybe if we can get it to work out, we could start it in the spring, might be a good time. So that's where we are with that. Our grant application has been okayed through the state review process, and then we're just waiting on final approval from MEMA. I did put a document, I think, in your boxes that you all saw. Tree replacement, that was brought up today, we're getting ready to go on the right tree, right place, tree replacement, we had a little informal meeting about that today. We're probably going to have to push that a little bit, though, because it's so dry, we've had such little rain that, that we're kind of in a tough situation, so it may be more into October before we start the plantings, want to get some rain, get some, get the, because the, the ground is dry, very, very dry, and, and so that may be delayed slightly. The new website is up and running, as you all know, I hope you had a chance to look at it, it really looks terrific, and I wanted to publicly thank Lorena, she did an outstanding job, she really put that together quickly, she picked up the ball and ran with it. Obviously, it'll develop more as we go, if you have any further ideas or anything you want to see added or whatever, let us know, and we'll get it on there. I did add in here about parking in the housing developments, and it's also part of my article in the, in the newsletter, the quarterly newsletter. We have some issues down, particularly in Roberts Field, on some of those little side streets, the little, the little cul-de-sacs in particular, we're having a lot of complaints about lack of parking and, and some other issues. First of all, I want to make sure everybody understands, those streets have no parking on one side of those streets for a reason, and that is to accommodate the fire trucks, rescue, and the snow plows, and if we allowed people to park on both sides of the street, the fire trucks can't get down there, the plows can't get down there. A lot of the parking signs have disappeared, now where they go, I have no idea, they're probably in teenagers' bedrooms, I would suspect, so we are replacing those. The other issue is, is I hope everyone understands that those developments, those neighborhoods in particular, were designed with two cars per house in mind. We know for a fact, there are some houses that have five and six cars, and that's what's creating the problem. We, obviously, we can't tell people you can only have two cars, this is free country, you can have as many as you want, but it has caused a problem. So I have, in actual effect, referred some of the complainants back to the HOAs to have a discussion about this very issue. The other thing we're having a problem with, and I've, I've seen it, I don't know if the police department's noticed, on the cul-de-sacs, some people are now, rather than parallel parking, they're perpendicular parking, they're pulling front end in up on the grass, I don't know if you've seen that, chief. Yeah, and that's, that's going to be a potential problem for the plows in the winter if they're doing that, so we're going to try to discourage folks. I don't know, there isn't anything in the code-
Doesn't leave enough turning radius?
Pardon me?
Doesn't leave enough turning radius?
Well, they stick out.
I know.
Yeah, and it, yeah, so they can't, they can't get around the circle.
So if you, in some cases, if, if everybody did that, and you had a fire down there, you pull one engine in, and then you have to back everyone out to get them out, it's a mess.
Yeah, so we're, we're telling folks, please don't do that. Then the last thing, I had the Water Resource Council, WRC, next meeting on September 25th, we will be meeting with MDE, representatives from MDE will be coming, and we're going to be talking about the watershed implementation plan in the county, overall, the WIP, and we're going to be talking about milestones, best, best management practices, land use, and septic systems.
So you're just talking general stuff, nothing about what we asked them to come talk to, and they said they weren't ready for?
Right, they didn't want to talk about that. So that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Questions for Brad? All right, Marlene, start us off.
Farmer's Market report. Our market attendance keeps increasing, which is a good thing. As of this past Saturday, we had eighty, over eighty-five hundred total customers visiting the market, averaging five hundred and seventy-one per Saturday, also averaging twenty-two vendors per week, and based on the current numbers and projected attendance, we do anticipate hosting our ten-thousandth customer on closing day, which is September 28th.
Congratulations.
Now you're going to ask me to compare. For which I'm ready. Through the same time last year, we had fifty-eight hundred customers, so that's almost three thousand more.
Great.
I attribute that to maybe a greater variety of vendors, we have, we're averaging twenty-two vendors this year as opposed to fourteen last year, so people have a good quality and a good variety of things to choose from, so I think, and people like coming, people just have fun, so, we're excited about that. The Carnival Week relocation of Joseph Bank went extremely smoothly, everybody involved has already been publicly thanked, and as a side note, one of our vendors, White Family Farms, donated fifteen bags of potatoes to the carnival for french fries, one of the evenings. The August 31st Serving Carol event just was spectacular. Mary Jo Malone of Dean's Restaurant was the guest chef that day, and Steve Rogers of the barbecue store lent us a grill that Mary Jo used in preparing market produce. I talked with Sherry Taylor at the CMC, no, not Sherry, Sherry wasn't in, but I talked with the CMC yesterday, the program is still at, being edited, so they anticipate mid to late September when it will be aired, and what they do is, they'll, they'll air it several times throughout the week, numerous times, until they have another program, another subject to cover, so it could be, feasibly, it could be on Channel 19 for a whole month before they have another thing, so as soon as I get a firm date, I'll let Lorena know, so maybe she could put something on the website about that. Councilman Thomas is working on securing an indoor location for our Christmas market, which will be November the 22nd, and it will be the same evening as the tree lighting. We're looking at a place right across the street, and the train station is going to be hosting the event. Actually, we want, we're trying to get the first floor of the old art house. So it would be convenient, it would be lit up and decorated, and, you know, once people are done with the tree lighting, they can go over there to, or the church.
Or before?
Or before, or before, yes.
And when did you say we're doing the tree lighting?
Twenty-second.
You said the twenty-second.
All right.
So that's what we said.
Okay.
I submitted an article for the next town newsletter which summarizes the market season. Yesterday, I attended the monthly meeting of Partnership for Healthier Carol in Westminster, and closing day is September 28th, and we'll have our usual face painting and magic and caramel apples and music and a lot of fun. So we're really thrilled with the attendance numbers, and I keep talking about the numbers, but what I think is more exciting is just the spirit, the community spirit that really pervades the market, and I think anybody who goes will see that people just enjoy it, they have fun, they eat, they socialize, they stay, we'll stand there and look, and I'll look at a couple, and like an hour later, they're still talk, they're talking to friends, so it's a very safe atmosphere and people have fun, so hopefully we'll, we'll be able to continue it next year.
I would think you should be. Wayne?
The Hampstead Business Association met on September 4th at New York J&amp;P, their guest speaker was Commissioner Avon Sheemaker, and their next meeting is going to be on October 2nd, and they decided to move this one to the evening, see if they can get their attendance up, so more about that later. The train station, we recently got a donation of Black &amp; Decker train sets, brand new in the box, apparently they only put them out in two years, 1994 and 1995, this guy got both of them and decided he wanted to donate them to the train station, so we're going to get those on display down there.
Who was your donator?
Man by the name of Mr. Knott, local gentleman.
Good.
Worked at Black &amp; Decker for forty-one years.
It was very nice of him.
It was extremely nice of him. The plans are progressing on the back room, that's all I have to say.
Jason?
Planning and zoning commission met on August 28th, minutes were approved for July 24th. Brad touched on most of the points of the Main Street revitalization, at that time, we had not, did not know about the funding, so this is a great update. North Carroll Farms Five update, the reforestation requirements for that site have been determined to be off-site, they're going to do that at a twelve-acre plot off of Old Bachman Valley Road. They're still waiting on comments for three county agencies, but expect to have that within the next week or so, and the agreement for, between SHA and the developer for Greenmount Church Road has been made, SHA is going to widen and pave as necessary.
County.
County is going to widen and pave as necessary, and then, I guess, hand that remaining section of road over to the town to maintain, is my understanding, which apparently we do anyway, because it's, rather than lift the plows for that three-hundred feet, we'd end up plowing it. We approved a proposed decorative fence for 902 South Main Street, there was no county update, Brad has updated on the Iliana Plaza Two, and then there was a brief discussion on a proposed possible long-term project off of Upper Beckleyville Road, however, there's lots of roadblocks that they would have to overcome, but we'll may have updates with that in the future. Next planning and zoning meeting will be on September 25th, and that is all.
Thanks. Jim?
All right, Parks Department, just one small thing, we did add two more benches over the Hampstead Municipal Park, we now have four benches near the Neos machine, and we're also looking at putting a picnic table there, and I guess as summer's winding down, I'll just say, the weather's still great, so get out and enjoy the parks while you still can, that is all.
Sounds good. Joe?
Water usage for August is three hundred and eighty-eight thousand gallons per day. September, it's up to four hundred and three thousand gallons per day, need to conserve. Rainfall total for August is 2.55 inches, and the rainfall so far for September were really dry at two hundredths of an inch. The third quarter water meter readings and rechecks are completed, and the third quarter water sampling for MDE monitoring requirements are collected and delivered to Enviro Chem Lab, that's all I have.
All right, chief?
Traffic safety, the officers had issued a hundred and sixty-three citations and warnings in August, there were fifteen crashes reported, eight of those on Main Street, four on the bypass, and two on parking lots, so we're driving a little better on the parking lot because. Serious crime during August, there were five thefts and three burglaries, the thefts included the shoplifting at Tiffy Mart, theft of a woods glitterer from Charlotte Road, theft of, from an unlocked vehicle on Upper Ford, also theft of a tip jar from the snowball stand where they absconded with it and ran off, and thefts of checks from, it was a family issue, on Fairway Square. Three burglaries occurred at the following locations, 4,100 block of Upper Beckleyville Road, that was the Verizon building, still is the Verizon building, right there at the corner of East Alley, and, yeah, this is-
Upper Beckley.
East and Upper Beckley. And 3,800 Hampstead Mexico Road, which was a garage, and the 1,200 block of Main Street, which was an unlocked apartment. Arrests, the Hampstead Police Officers made twelve arrests in August, community policing, the officers conducted a hundred and twenty patrol checks at parks, schools, and businesses. We were also involved with Carnival Week, of course, in August, most of our staff worked evening hours to help monitor the crowd and activities surrounding the carnival and parade. I attended a press conference for the Adopt a School Initiative, which is a cooperative program with Carroll County Public Schools and law enforcement across the county, designed to increase the presence of law enforcement in the schools. Officers also assisted with Manchester PD, assisted Manchester PD with the Manchester Valley School Stampede, and we also assisted Maryland State Police with traffic issues related to the viewing and funeral of PFC Jason Schneider from Baltimore County. Canine activity, PFC Haltermann and Nico conducted six traffic scans and searches during August. Staffing, Sergeant Ridgio is no longer a member of the Hampstead Police Department, is currently pursuing a medical retirement. During his career with the Hampstead Police Department, he's frequently honored by organizations including the Maryland Chiefs of Police and the Maryland Highway Safety Office for his exceptional performance. We also have not heard anything regarding PFC Haltermann's lateral transfer to Howard County, so we're kind of on hold on that, and we are in phase two of the cops grant application process for that school resource officer. We're actively reviewing applications for entry level and lateral transfers of officers, and we hope to be in a position to select at least one candidate by leg fall. This past Monday, PFC Schwartz received an award from the Maryland Chiefs of Police Association honoring him for exceptional performance. In traffic safety, this continues the trend that we've been very fortunate to have the men and women of the Hampstead Police Department honored almost annually at that conference. Captain Grubin was in Ocean City with PFC Schwartz at the presentation ceremony. And a reminder, the next meeting of the Hampstead Police Advisory Council is scheduled for Wednesday, November the 20th at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall. As you may have heard, the August meeting was, I would say, poorly attended with the exception of the, of the council, and I thank those from the council who attended, and the police officers, and, and, other than that, we probably didn't have that many people. Fortunately, Rachel was there, so we did get a, we, we, we kind of got the coverage that we didn't get from the people attending here, because I think there was a total, what, three articles?
I think it was like two, I think.
I think there was one in that Hampstead Manchester insert that goes in.
Oh, probably two.
If I'm not mistaken, there was, we got three exposures through the media from that event, and so we did get some word out that we probably wouldn't have normally gotten out, again, thank you for your coverage of that, but I sure would like to see the, the more people here, because it was a great presentation.
Is it? Whatever happened with that truck, did we figure out it was a mechanical issue, or the guy was flying through the roundabout when he flipped it?
I don't think they're done with the investigation yet, because they had to, they had to bring in the state commercial vehicle inspection people in to take a look at the, at the vehicle, and of course, the driver was flying out, so you couldn't, you couldn't have been able to.
I would suggest we tick mark the week before the next meeting that you have, so we do a press release.
Yeah, I probably need to do a better job.
All right, questions for chief? My turn, August, the carnival and the parade, I think the, the, as usual, the Hampstead Volunteer Fire Department did a usual superb job, our thanks for that, they bring so many people into town, and the parade is just very well-attended. Basically throwing my arm out, throwing lollipops left and right, you know, for the one-mile route of the parade, but it's, it's a great time. Maryland Municipal League, I continue to serve on the board for the next year, so in the past month, we, we attended a nose game at the Governor's Box, and then we had a board retreat this past weekend down in Salisbury, basically setting the agenda for the, for the coming year. Couple of the things that we talked about, other than just some team-building exercises, were how to, to raise revenue for the league other than raising dues and, and getting member, more members involved in the municipal league earlier on in their elected lives, so it was a good meeting, and, you know, it's an interesting place to go to Delmar, Maryland. Basically, their Main Street is, is the state line, and so forty percent of the towns in Delaware and sixty percent of the towns in Maryland, each side has their own mayor and town council, and they get together once a month in the chamber, and there's ten councils, there's ten chairs up here, so it's a, it's a pretty interesting arrangement that they've had that's evolved over the years. Then, as everybody's already talked about, we were very fortunate that the Maryland Department of Transportation chose the Hampstead Revitalization Project for $20 million in funding. To give you an idea of scale, that's eight times the size of our normal operating budget at $2.5 million, so we were pleased to hear that, and, you know, we put out a press release, but I think it goes a long way in saying that I think over the years, we've built up a really good rapport with the staff of SHA, and I'll name names, but Dennis German, Cornelius Ballmer, Ju Jong Bai, and Dave Coyne deserve specific mention, and as a matter of fact, Dave and, you know, Dennis came here personally to see Brad, and I gave us a little heads-up that something might be coming our way in a week later, but, you know, some of those relationships date back to 1995, and when we were out there trying to rekindle interest in the bypass from SHA, and so those relationships have served us very well, and, and they've given us a lot of heads-up over the year that, you know, you might want to consider doing this at X time, and of course, you know, doesn't take a genius to, that we should follow direction when given to us, and so they've been, done great, and then, you know, everybody sitting at this table and past people who've sat at this table as well for supporting everything that we've done, so that we, basically, when the state had the money as, as a result of the revenue enhancements that they did related to, related to road taxes, our project basically, I think, stood up a little bit higher than others as far in being further along the planning curve, and so I think it was a relative easy choice for the governor and our new secretary, Jim Smith, to make their funding decisions, and then one person who's sat up here for eight years and helped us out, Larry Hance, deserves a lot of kudos for, you know, basically volunteering his time, he's a registered engineer, and, you know, when somebody comes in, it's just like when you're an accountant, and you can talk accounteese, you know, when you can talk the language of the fellow engineer, I think a lot more happens, and there's a, there's a better understanding of what it is that's involved in the project, and Larry's very good at translating it to English so we can all understand it. So notwithstanding, you know, it's not going to be advertised for bid for, for two years, and then we'll start in the spring of '16, there's still a lot that can happen, there's still a lot more planning that needs to happen, you know, we continue to host the meetings, as Brad referenced, one today, we continue to stay in touch with particularly Dennis and Dave as needed to continue to move the project forward, there's still, you know, we voted to go forward, the Water Main Project, they're saying we should reexamine that, so there's still a lot of planning to be done, and there'll be, of course, a lot of community outreach related to it, they'll, and more than just one meeting, I would think, that they'll talk to us about timing, and then as they get closer, they'll talk to us about exactly how they're going to sequence it, how they're going to, you know, how they close one side of the road when they're deciding on doing what piece of the project, and we'll, you know, help them with that feedback. But I think there's also been a lot of lessons learned over the years, it's not their first rodeo, and so I, hopefully, they, you know, we, they've learned from their lessons, and we've taken good notes from Tony Town, Mount area, and others who've gone through this, so we'll make it as smooth as possible, but there will be bumps in the road, so to speak, but we'll try to make them as small and as short in duration as possible. So that's the big news, and it's great news. There's no real business before the council today unless somebody wants to bring up, Benny?
Under new business?
Sure. Continuing on the theme of Main Street, I think it's great that we got the funding, this is probably the best opportunity the town of Hampstead's had to make an improvement in probably eighty years since the first road went in. Now that we've been funded, I think it's time, you know, usually Verizon won't talk to you till you've been funded, now that we've been funded, I think we should try to engage Verizon in a conversation about getting those lines off the poles, not at the ground. I think we should go back and look at the Main Street plan. We did a lot of work on that plan over the years, there's a lot of good suggestions in there, we need to make a suggestion on whether, or a decision about whether or not we want to do any kind of decorative sidewalks down, downtown, even if it's just along the edge to kind of highlight the downtown area. I think removing those poles on one side of the street would do a lot to improve the look of downtown, and if we can, I've talked to some people at BG&E, and they, they would be receptive to getting the lines buried on one side of the street, and that would clear up what I call the visual clutter on looking down Main Street, there won't be any lines on one side of the street, there won't be any lines going across the street. I think that'll do a lot for downtown, and we should look at what the cost's going to be.
We're going to do it all. We're going to reach out to Mike Fowler, and now that we have been funded, you're right, BG&E and Verizon are coming around.
Yeah.
Slowly, but they're coming around. But with them, two years will go in a blink of an eye. And then the only other thing under new business is just get ready for next, the next month, I sort of give you a month of warning, but had several conversations with Donna Lyons, who owns Magnolia, as I think many of you know her from her time with the Main Street merchants and whatnot, and just being generally involved in town business, but I'm going to recommend her for a position on the BCA next month, so if you want to reach out and talk to her, you know where to find her at Magnolia's, she's pretty much there. Any other new business? And public comments? Ken?
Just a few words representing the Main Street merchants, I'm glad to hear the BG&E is moving out, but unfortunately, they're going to be moving back next Monday, I hope. We have, we are putting a guess, and they're moving across the street, so they anticipate that's going to take about a week, so they'll be working in front of the War Memorial, hopefully blowing it across the street and hooking it into our building. We're ready to go if they get it across there. The last time they tried to do it, they thought it would take a day, and then they ran into concrete, and it took a week, so I'm paying for that mistake this time.
Okay. Yes, there's a big concrete block that-
Yes.
Curve to curb, almost.
So hopefully they'll be in, because I'd like to get this hooked up before cold weather, because if not, we're out of heat.
Okay.
We're, we're changing the gas. If you haven't, I hope you've received one of these in your mailbox, everybody around town, this is a collaborative effort between, and the first one, I think, between the Hampstead Bus- Business Association, the Main Street Merchants Association, and Manchester Area Merchants Association. There were about 9,000 or 10,000 of these that have been mailed out. And I think they hit the mailboxes about this past weekend. I've had several calls already, so we're hoping that, you know, it took us probably seven months to put this thing together. I'm sure Wayne's familiar with that process. He's dealt with a lot of these and pulling all those groups together and getting all the ads together. But we're really proud of what came out. So I'm very pleased with that. And the next thing, we have our annual Main Street Merchants Breakfast to follow up with the closing of the market on the 28th at the Hampstead Fire Hall from 7:00 to 10:00. Tickets are six bucks and I'd be glad to send you a couple or if you talk to me right, I'll give you a couple.
Okay. Oh, I think we should pay for them. You got to raise money. Thank you for the update. Anybody else? Take a motion to adjourn?
Take a motion to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thanks for hanging out with us.